I mean, so I'd like to begin with you, Mr. Bose. And we addressed this in our questionnaire, but I want to address it verbally here as well. Tell us why, you know, you're the best candidate in this race and what distinguishes you from the other three people on the ballot in this race?
Thank you for the question and good morning. I have the most diverse experience as a small business owner, as a community activist and actor in the Get Out The Vote and lifting up Amplified. Marginalized communities is something that I've worked on for 10, 15 plus years in our community and noted as such. I also believe I bring a different perspective as an advocate. Having worked in Broward County and with many of the families that I live with that are my neighbors. Our highest removal rate for foster kids is in my zip code. So many of the families that I've served over the years, I know. And a lot of the issues that we have as a community are echoed throughout our district. And I think as an advocate first, I lead with the servant's heart. And I believe a rising tide lifts all the boats. And I think our community has been blighted and neglected for years. And for that reason, I believe we need someone who has the community's benefit in mind and not a personal aspiration to do anything. Because long before I filed my paperwork, I've been a community servant and I want to continue to do that. Continue to lift up my community, continue to lift up my neighbors. And I think because of my diverse business advocacy and community experience, partnerships with private and public entities, I'm able to do that.
Okay, and tell us, what's, what's at the root, in your opinion, what is at the root of the long level of blight and neglect by the city of your community?
So this kind of goes without saying for all of us who are history buffs. Obviously, there have been some noted cases of institutional racism in our community. And for that reason, our community has lagged behind for decades. For instance, redlining, for instance, predatory lending as it relates to housing. For instance, we were restricted to live within certain zip codes in Fort Lauderdale. Those same zip codes additional to low income. We also didn't have a diverse tax base. So services to the community have gone neglected and the city tends to react and not plan. And so we find now, of course, we have CIP, Community Investment Plan, but we're playing catch up. And if we continue this way, we'll always be behind other districts. We want to live, work and prosper like any other district in Fort Lauderdale. And I think community activists like Ms. Hankerson probably echo my sentiments as well. It's important that our community and the vision that we have, our community is reflected on the dais and it hasn't been, in my opinion.
Okay, Nadine Hankerson, we're going to open the floor to you and I'm going to start by asking you the same question, which is, tell us why you're the best candidate in this race?
Well, when you use the word best, that can be a little tricky, especially for people of color. Because oftentimes, those types of questions creates a divide and conquer. And we need to be a oneness as a group of people who are looking for opportunities from a city that claims to build on community. But yet, we have not been able to share the economic wealth of this community. And currently, over at least my lifetime, because I think I got a few years on the candidates that are in the race. And I grew up here in Fort Lauderdale. I'm a native of Fort Lauderdale, graduated from St. Thomas Aquinas High School. And numerous years of college and traveled the world. And here's what I can say to you is that the race-ish process that the people of color in this community has had to live under for at least my parents' lifetime, and they both are deceased. It hasn't been fair, especially in terms of land equity. When we've been asked to, under the ordinance in 1941, from what was Colletown, now that is the Negro District, after a long civil rights movements, segregation, integration, and now we're here in District Three, still fighting the same fight. Somewhere, somebody needs to begin standing up and saying that this is wrong, bad behavior. Return some of the land and make it about a cultural district that is going to be for the greater good. And I think that all of the candidates, all of the women that are part of at least District Three cares the same, the way I care the same. So I'm not putting myself as best. I'm going to say is that I'm prepared and I'm seasoned to do the job.
Okay, you know, you both have mentioned history and you're both very much aware of the fact that until 1988, it was 1988 when Fort Lauderdale switched to a system of single-member districts that you're both running in now. Prior to 1988, all the city commissioners were elected citywide. And to no one's surprise, with maybe one exception, maybe two exceptions, all the commissioners lived basically east of US One. The whole point of single-member districts was to give each part of the community a distinct and a strong voice on the dais at City Hall. Ms. Hankerson, why hasn't single-member districts done more to rectify these past wrongs about the way the city's been run?
Well, it depends. There are a few things why it hasn't worked. One, it's about strictly numbers. If you've got one representative and you have five other seats or four other seats at the table, and that's just the math. However, when Andrew DeGraffanright, he won and he was west of the railroad tracks. I'm not sure whether single districts work for us anymore. Because when we only have one vote and that one vote may not be persuasive enough to have the kind of turnaround that the African-American community and other people of color would like to have in their community. So we might need to begin rethinking single-member districts.
Yvette DuBose, what is your perspective on this point?
So with all due respect, I do disagree, but I do think we need some more consensus building on the dais. And for instance, when the 2020 disparity study was done with the city and we looked at the percentage of black vendors that could do business with the city first, which was a pool of about 18% of total of all applicants, and only 4% were awarded the contracts. That's an instance where the city doesn't actually need a vote. They just need to adhere to, if we want to live, work and play, we need to make sure everyone has an opportunity to work. And if we had qualified black vendors bidding to do business with the city, the question is, why did not happen? And why was there an extreme drop? And that's based on sources from the city that was published in 2020. And we have one black representative, but the entire dais should support diversity. The entire dais should prioritize local businesses because small businesses keep our communities employed. And so that's something the city can do right now to address disparity and to make sure that we are doing what we say we're going to do. We have a study, we see that there's an issue and address it, and it hasn't been addressed and it's now 2022.
As a small business owner yourself, give us a specific or a tangible example of what more Fort Lauderdale could be doing to nurture and help small businesses?
So I, to echo the sentiments of the last response, is doing business with local business owners in the community that employ our neighbors. More than 80% of our neighbors work for small businesses, not counting Broward County Schools. It's the largest employer here. The opportunity to diversify our tax base, the opportunity to employ our neighbors, we could have that right here locally. And one of the biggest employers is also fire police higher locally. One of our largest employers within the city is also city parks higher locally. Do the applicants live in the city? And that's something that we have been talking about as community activists for years. And saying, we need community policing, we need the fire, we need our parks and wrecks to live in our community. And that's how you have a community that is lifted with the rising tide. Everyone knows everyone and everyone can vouch for and account for. And that's when you start to see the confidence in the community and the confidence in the city that you pay your taxes to, that it's reciprocated.
Okay. Dr. Hankerson, I wanted to ask you about a controversial decision the city commission made, I think the very early part of this year, I believe. And that's the approval of the so-called one-stop-shop project. Entertainment venue, big food pavilion, empty lot, as you're well aware, just west of the existing city hall in the heart of downtown. There was opposition from the Flagler Village community. It was a heavily lobbied project, the city did approve it. Tell us how you would have voted if you were a member of the city commission?
Well, based on, I think I answered that question and I I don't think that we've been given enough data to really render an opinion. I wasn't there, I wasn't sitting as an active member. So to ask me what my opinion would be, I believe in having, I'm a data-driven individual. And I'm data-driven from the fact that I'm an econometrician by degree. And in that, there are components that I understand and know what to do in terms of good decision-making. And I understand shared responsibility as well as giving value. But I will say to you is that I'm not in agreement with anything that does not create a livelihood for the people. I think we have to move a past jobs for people, especially menial jobs that don't meet the needs of being able to take care of just basic necessities, which is housing, eating and enjoying at least some value of life. So as far as I'm concerned, is that it must create an avenue for a livelihood for people to live and enjoy and have respect for all folks for this community. So without having that link data before me, or what I would call hyper-local data, I can't say that I don't know what decision I would render because I was not a part of that at that time.
Okay, I'm going to ask Yvette DuBose the same question. It's about one-stop shop.
I agree, hindsight is always 2020. So to be hypothetical on how you would vote when you didn't sit on the dais and have access to all the information that the commissioners have access to, I don't think it's prudent to comment on that. I will say, I did participate as a community activist on many of the Zooms for Flagler Village to listen to the neighbors and hear and affirm their concern. And a lot of the neighbors weren't necessarily against it, or the ones that were on the Zooms, they wanted more time. They wanted a delay. And so I would agree to that, to giving them more time. Sometimes projects feel like they're fast-paced, sometimes the projects feel like. And I think this is one of the challenges the city is facing right now. The transparency of the process and the timeline of the process is what a lot of neighbors are saying. What is the rush? Can we have more time? What is it economic impact? What is environmental impact? What is the percentage of local people that will be hired to work at said project? And I think everyone wants to see smart development. And I think the neighbors were asking for more time to assess with all that information back that I just mentioned. So I think in hindsight, to say how I would or wouldn't vote, wouldn't be prudent when you don't have all the information in front of you to make a decision.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to open the floor to my colleague, Dan Sweetie.
Hey, thanks, Steve. Redevelopment and, and, you know, affordable housing is really important in the district, but you walk a fine line because, you know, as developers come in and want to redevelop, you wind up getting, you seem to not get more affordable housing, you just get more and more expensive housing. How do you, how do you provide, you know, housing for residents without tumbling down this gentrification rabbit hole that so many other communities, especially in Dade, in Miami, as they've redeveloped, have seen where you get the loss of whole populations and all new people coming in and everything? How do you, how do you walk that tightrope between making sure that people there have the housing they can afford and while also staving off, you know, the, the kind of gentrified nightmare that we've seen in some other places? Mr. Bose, I'll start with you.
Okay, so I was wondering who you're asking. That is very true, it's being echoed in many of our cities that are majority-minority across the US. And the Northwest is not any different. I think I'll go back to how I said earlier, we've been ignored for so long. It's almost like we can't turn down smart housing development because there's such a low inventory. And when you say affordable housing, affordable for whom? You know, do we have a livable wage? Are people spending 30% of, more than 30% of their income on rent or their mortgage? And so that's, all this ties hand in hand, economics and livable wage. And are the earners being outpaced? Where are the jobs going to and why can't they be here in our, in our district? And so we need affordable housing, yes. We have a low inventory, there's bottlenecking with supply chain. When I talk to emerging developers and people who want to develop in our community and build affordable housing, these are some of the conversations we've had and the city hasn't perhaps made the pot sweet enough for tax incentives for black builders who want to come and they can't be as competitive with someone else who has more capital. And so in my quest to always have an open conversation about how do we solve this very fixable problem? That's one of the issues that comes up when the city is doing business with developers. Are they making sure that so many units are dedicated to affordable housing? And then what is affordable housing? We need experts with lived experience that can speak to this, to be at the table when these decisions are being made. Because I can tell you now, it's not reflective of the community and the development that we've seen over the years. And my family, my son, my youngest is fourth generation Fort Lauderdale. So my husband and our family have been here for generations and slowly have seen the demographics of the neighborhood change, the housing values change. And you see people, when grandma passes away, sell the house because that's probably the most money they'll ever see in their lifetime and a generation. And then what happens? Who moves in? With that, cultural knowledge is left, there's no transfer of knowledge and culture to, this is a very rich and beautiful community. And we're missing those pieces, we need to be connected. So it's more than a one-pronged approach to the shortage of inventory for affordable housing. It's also a livable wage. It's also making sure emerging developers have tax incentives to come in and build in our community. It's also making sure the people that live here can work and play here.
Thank you. Ms. Hankerson, Dr. Hankerson, did you want to address the question?
Yes, I can. I think, well, I don't have to think, I know that housing is a supply and a demand issue. And it's based on profit. And so until we began to look at our models that we build in order to create affordable housing, we're going to continue to have those problems. So if we decide that we want to have what is affordable, because supply and demand equals profit does not always equal affordable. So what we need to have is municipal housing. And municipal housing is based on federal law. We need to begin to go back and look at the laws that we build around what we are trying to create is a home for those who don't have them or a space for those who don't have that space. So under the Faircloth Amendment, there are caps. And I'm not sure what the city of Fort Lauderdale's caps are. I'm not sure what Broward County caps are. But they can build housing and stop taking the money from under HUD and using it as a factor with developers in order to create profit for themselves. So if we began to go and look at the models that we need to have in order to create the housing that would be provided for those who do not or cannot afford it because it has to be paid by a shared responsible society. And until we get that past, the profit margin, everything is built on a quadratic equation. So if that equation is put out there and they, if it equals profit, then most likely it is not going to be affordable based on the Alice, which all of us know what Alice is. That's that income constraint and the working poor. And so you have limited assets, you have income constraints and you still working? No, you won't be finding anything with the title of affordable attached to it. So we need to begin to just take a look at the models. Let's look at the real laws that can benefit the greater good of communities. And then we can begin to kind of open up some of them doors because I'm sure a lot of those buildings that's downtown Fort Lauderdale don't have full capacity. And, and when folks like me come knocking at the door, y'all know what happens. They close it. So let's, you know, keep it 100 and understand that if we want to be able to build, and we don't necessarily have to build, we already have some of that available. So it is about taking a look at it and figuring out how it gets paid for. And it doesn't get paid for under the profit and supply and demand model. You need a new model. Thank you.
Mr. Bose, in your last answer, you mentioned it's not just a matter of housing, it's also a matter of wages and living wages. Among the many, many instances in which Tallahassee has preempted local laws is minimum wage laws. How do you work with, with the state to sort of ensure this thing? Do you think that preemption laws in this and other areas are affecting, are affecting your community particularly?
Absolutely, and I'm a home rule person. I think what we're seeing in Tallahassee, the stripping away of our local power should be cause for alarm. Should be another incentive for people to get out the vote. Because this is what happens when a party has gone unchecked for decades. They can do what they want and their agenda. And I think it's very concerning how we're being dictated to by Tallahassee. It's important that home rule applies here. Of our 31 cities, all of them are being impacted here in Broward. I do think it's important that we encourage businesses to have a livable wage. I think it's important that we encourage our businesses that we do work with, that have a tax base with, that we are encouraging, because you can't mandate certain things, that you are encouraging a livable wage. If there's an incentive that the city can do with the businesses and vendors that they do business with on a daily basis as far as operations, I would encourage that as well. You can operate how you operate. And I think it's important that we have this conversation and continue to have this conversation to shed light. Because some people just don't know, if you're not in the bubble of politics and following all of this stuff, you probably wouldn't know. In addition to, you know, the livable wage, we all know, in addition to the Alice study, the Sadowski Fund, which is rated every year, but supposed to go towards supporting these affordable housing. So there, there have been things that are put in, put in place. And then we also have some unfunded mandates. So we have to have a connection and a good working relationship with our other electeds locally and that represent us in Tallahassee. So that we're not just a donor, donor county, a donor community, and we're not getting back what we need from Tallahassee.
Go ahead, Nadine, if you wanted to answer the same question.
Well, I think that it's associated with unchecked greed. Unchecked greed has gone on a long time in the state of Florida. And I don't think people who wake up every day should have to beg for a wage that is going to provide the basic needs for them and their family. So until, going back to the model, we have to take a look at what are the indicators that are being brought to the table? That measure is the measurements. And I know a lot of times people don't think data is important. It's very much important because data can be, the outcomes can be driven based on the models that you put before us. So when we start looking at these algorithm processes that gives us these answers that are supposed to be providing for us so that people are getting their fair share out of what they're bringing to the table. So we have to begin to understand that, yes, we have workers and they must get their fair share of what the owners or what government has in store. So the bottom of the stack as well as the top of the stack needs to find the sweet spot that brings the balance and the equilibrium to the worker.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do you have further questions?
Yeah, I do. I want to completely change the topic and the focus and this, this issue barely touches on, maybe on District Three, but it's something that's been in the news a lot. I'm going to begin with you, Dr. Hankerson. This idea that's been promoted by the mayor, Dean Trantallas, for a tunnel going from roughly the Performing Arts Center, an underground tunnel to the beach to effectuate smoother traffic flow from downtown to the beach. And it's also been referred to in news accounts as the Tesla Tunnel. You'd get in a Tesla luxury car and ride the two and a half miles over to, over to the elbow room to go to the beach. This is something the city has spent and is going to spend more time on in the, in the next, with the next commission is organized in November. What do you think about this proposal? What does it tell you about the city?
Well, what it did tell me about the city, after sitting through the State of the Union address, is that black folks ain't in y'all mind. That's what it says to me. And when I sat there and looked at the screen and I pretty much counted maybe on the, on the, on the different, the pictures that was involved, it clearly wasn't looking for black folk. So I'm going to say, as for me, I'm not for anything that is going to destroy the land or anything that is going to destroy the space where people, where humanity lies. And it's all like the expense of a dollar because you still got to drive your car or whatever it is you're going to get to get to that tunnel. And I know anytime the word bridge come, you can may as well equate it to black. So I'm not for running a bridge if it has to run through where or displace people without really taking a thorough look at the profits. Because that's what's driving a lot of this. So we have to go back to the equation of profit over humanity and figure out how to find that balance. So for me, I would not necessarily vote for any of it unless they come to the table with some good explanations on what they are doing with the human beings who two-thirds of them may not even be afford to take advantage of that luxury. That is luxury as far as I'm concerned. I'm trying to meet the basic needs of the people of a community. Thank you.
Pardon, I muted myself, thank you. I wanted to say thanks, Dr. Hankerson, for that detailed answer. And the same question for you, Mr. Bose.
So based on what I have seen from the reporting, and I'm sure I don't have access to everything that the commissioners have access to and the people that I've spoken to, there is, is a huge concern for the environmental impact. There, it is being proposed as transport, but it is for tourists and which is a huge part of our economy. And I understand and appreciate that. What I have found in speaking to, because I've been on a listening tour this past year or so, in speaking to neighbors, the concern is the impact to the neighborhood, the impact to the home values and also the environmental impact and what that means. And some of the infrastructure that we haven't addressed with our growth, how is that impacted? So the experts that I've spoken to and everyday neighbors who I've spoken to have grave concerns about this project and want again for the city to slow down, to speak to them, to hear from them. And it feels fast-paced that you're going no matter what. And I think we always have to because we're beholden to our voters. We're beholden to the people who put us here. And if the ideals aren't representative of what they want and envision for their city, then we have a disconnect. And I think it's important that we factor in, in addition to all the research they're doing, the cost analysis, the environmental impact and what that means for our neighbors. Because that is literally up the street from us. And so it's, it's a concerning project. I anticipate to have more access to more information. And so it's, it's a concerning project. Um, I anticipate to have more access to more information. Um, um, if the voters choose me and, um, we'll address it, um, after having all the research and impact. But on the outside, looking in and having spoken to neighbors and some experts, um, it, it has a big question mark.
Okay. Slightly different topic, I'll begin with you, Mr. Bose. You know, you've, you've, you've obviously had a lot of experience, a lot of interaction with city government. And, uh, you know, since, since COVID-19, uh, you know, acts in, in all levels of government, the importance of having access to virtual, you know, online meetings, online, uh, coverage of, of city government is, is very important. My specific question to you is, I'd like your opinion about the demeanor, the tone, the, uh, at City Hall, the way average residents are treated when they address the city commission. I don't want to presuppose what, that there is no right or wrong answer to this question. I'm, I'm interested in your opinion and in your perspective and how you might behave differently than what you see on the dais today.
Thank you for the question. I, I think that's very important. And, um, I'm happy to be endorsed by Ruthless and Dolphin Democrats, a very, very inclusive grassroots community, um, groups. I think it's important that whoever sits at the dais hears and listens to everyone that they represent. I, I think it's important that we have civility. I think it's important that whomever is elected, and I hope that it's me for District Three, we have to be consensus builders. Um, and I think in, in, in the, in the art of politics, um, it, it is a conversation and it's important that we still remember with research and data aside, we have to see the humanity in everything that we do and how does this impact, uh, everyday people? Um, because that's really who we represent, right? And so, um, it has been disheartening to see some of the, um, conversations and, and banter that go back and forth. I understand some of that has to do with politics, but it's important that we remind ourselves that you have to see the humanity in everyone and everyone has a concern. And every citizen deserves to be treated fairly, spoken to fairly, um, and addressed fairly. Um, and I have shown that in my track record in service to the community. Um, and I will continue to do that when elected.
Thank you. Dr. Hankerson, the same question.
I think that the way that the dais has been operating has been very disrespectful. I think a large part of it is outlining toxic masculinity. And that they don't spend enough time having real conversations except for surface conversations. Some of these things are rooted in racist and race-ish ideology. And until we began to sit down at the table and really have conversations, then the type of behavior that you see sitting at the dais will continuously spill over. And so what I am concerned about is that for the first time, there will be a woman of African descent that will be sitting in that seat. And oftentimes we are the bullet for folks to want to come with rude behavior, being disrespectful. You get called every name from being radical or you are, um, you, 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 you come with the, the B word attached to it. I mean, there are a host of things and these are the kinds of topics that people feel uncomfortable talking about, uh, talking about. Um, you know, it's always, oh, let's take the soft, soft approach and oh, we are going to do, that's not going to be me. I believe in respect, I give it and I would expect it in return. And so those are some of the things that we are going to have to begin talking about on how we speak to one another, how we have shared responsibilities and how we can talk about the elephant in the room that is race-ish behavior that some people learn through their lifetime. And they think is correct behavior and in fact is bad behavior. And so we must begin to have real conversations and, and you know, uh, uh, diversity can come anyway. That's a, that's one of those key words for, I need to be a part of club acquiesce. That's not going to be Nadine Hankerson. We're going to be respectful. We're going to treat one another with that level of respect. And we're going to be tenacious. We're going to be, um, maybe outspoken sometimes. And we're also going to be confident in what we bring to the table and we expect the same in return. So I think our citizens should have the opportunity to see us act as good servants and good stewards to our community, even when we don't disagree, when we agree with them or when we don't agree with them. You can be disagreeable and people can still understand your passion, your love for community, but respect and shared responsibility and its value for humanity is a must.
Okay. Uh, different subject, I'm going to stay with you for, for the beginning, Dr. Hankerson. Uh, District Three related issue, of course, uh, you know, this seat, you're both running for District Three and the seat is open because the incumbent, Robert McKinsey, uh, is moving to the Broward County Commission after eight years, I believe, at, at City Hall. And so there's been a lot of discussion, raised voices, a lot of angst recently at City Hall over the so-called Summer Jams concert that was held at Mills Pond Park, which the city leadership now says they were kept in the dark, didn't know the details, the expenditures wildly out of control, more than $400,000 and so forth. I think you both are very familiar with the, I hope you are with the outline of this situation. We've reported on it extensively. But Dr. Hankerson, what is your assessment of what happened here and what, if anything, should be done differently?
Well, I'm glad he spent the money, to be perfectly honest with you. Because that community has long not been a part of line item budgets for having activities. Billions of dollars being spent throughout Broward County, just on what I saw at the event, uh, the other night with, uh, with the mayor. So I'm not quite sure of all the backroom brawl behind it. But the bottom line is monies and resources need to also be spent in Broward in, in, uh, in, uh, District Three. We should be able to have A-rated, A-rated activities in our community. We're always given at the bottom of the stack for activities. When I looked at, if you look at just the lineup for activities, look at the Parker. I don't think it's anything there that's culturally black. Look at the, the performing arts. There's nothing there that's culturally black. And let's look at some of the other things that's been held in the community that has just not been culturally black. Black people should be able to be black. There shouldn't be anything wrong with having culture activities. We don't often get the kind of money that we should have at the table. And our land and looking at the black Elks that was once our signature grand is now being stolen. And the legacy behind it is not being talked about. All of our people are sitting back because they want the land. That's just unfair. It's bad behavior. So if we have to spend money in order to have an activity to bring in others who are supposed to be diverse, then they should have been at the table, not complaining, but showed up and should have been at the event and be a part of what's there. Because from what I understand, the event was supposed to be for all of the city. So if the city is still wanting to operate from a, a segregated mindset, that's what it goes to. Then they have to begin to say, is it fair to spend money on the boat show? Is it fair to spend big dollars on all of these other things? It's that the black community could have a black tourist, a Negro district, it could be there. So let's begin working together and make sure that the resources that puts to the table give a shared responsibility. Because we have sat in a deteriorating mode, not having access to money from the city and from a greater aspects from banks and other opportunities and other corporate sponsors have not just embraced. I could tell you, I've been here for over 60 years. And so I'm telling you, it's time. It's time and it's time to have real conversations. Let's stop with the pretty kicking the bucket down the road. We need to have some real conversations about what is fair, just and an equitable standpoint so that we can understand what is culturally black and be proud that it's culturally black. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bose, the same question to you. I'd like you to address the same subject.
So based on your reporting is, is where I received most of the information. Um, I echo many of the sentiments of, uh, Dr. Hankerson that, um, we should promote the Northwest. Um, I think that was the goal. My concern as a small business owner and as an executive, um, in the nonprofit world, when you have an approved budget, when you have a line item, um, as a steward of monies given, and this is tax dollars, you have to adhere to the budget. And if there's a change, um, all the parties, a part of the approval of that process and the voters, um, it should be a transparent process. And so my concern, I'm, I am for promoting our community. I am for, you know, making this a cultural destination. I am also for being a good steward of tax dollars that have been, um, given to us to oversee. And the purpose, I, I agree with the purpose of promoting the Northwest, not at the expense of the taxpayer. What was the line item budgeted for and why did it go over? Was it approved? Um, does everyone know what everyone's doing? Cause it, it appears to be a, a lot of gray area. Um, where there, and I, and I understand this is under investigation, so based on what you all have reported at the Sun Sentinel, it appears that there has been some, um, lack of transparency in the process in ballooning the budget. And I think that's where the concern lies. Parents, um, did we follow the letter of the law? Was the charter followed with the directives as it pertains to staff? Um, that would be my question. I do agree that we need to promote our city, uh, and our community. It's a very vibrant and rich community. I just want to make sure that we follow the letter of the law.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bose, uh, did you go to the State of the City address event at the Parker?
I did not. I had another event, campaign event.
Okay. I just didn't know if, whether you were there or not, and I'll, I'll, I'll circle back with Dr. Hankerson. She brought it up. You know, Dr. Hankerson is not the first person to, uh, that I've heard from who's raised questions about whether or not it was a little bit too grandiose in terms of the way it was put together. Have you heard anything like that or do you have any opinion about that?
Um, I've been to many State of the Cities, many, many, many over the years. Um, and here, here I am, as it pertains to again, um, it is so important if something is, you know, the budget is approved, we have line items for operating for, for special events and, and all these things. It's important that all the rules apply for every community. And I think that's what Dr. Hankerson is trying to say. Um, some rules apply for some communities and we should operate under the same, um, mandates. Um, so in years past, um, when I attended, there, there are always an event. Um, some have been outdoors, some have been indoors, um, and so they're always an event. And I, I think every community deserves to have the city come to them because most of us are, um, nine to fivers and we can't always go to City Hall to find out what's going on. So it's a great opportunity to interface with the public. With that said, it does need to be equitable as it pertains to, um, what you get, everyone should be getting.
Okay. And Dr. Hankerson, if you want to elaborate on your earlier comments about the State of the City, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, it was clear that black people are not really a part of the plan. And it was made clear and I really wasn't happy about it. And the branding, while the, the infamous YMCA building, which I, um, spoke out loud about, I've never been greatly a fan of the branding. I'm not a problem with the building, but the branding was all wrong. That land was Providence and it should have represented Providence. And for YMCA, which is one of the most racist organizations in America back in the earlier years, because it was in the community for a number of years and didn't even bother to put a paved, um, parking lot. And all of a sudden it's been given all of this money. And they brought money to the table, I'm aware of, but there are other folks in our communities who did not have those kinds of monies to be able to bring to the table. So for it to be sitting as a signature brand representing District Three is a slap in the face as far as I'm concerned. So, um, and if that's the only thing they can bring to the table as, as well as this six, I'm not quite sure of that whole housing complex and what was behind it. But, uh, as I ride through there, I don't see many black people walking in and out of it. So the same way they did with the annexing of the city view. You know, all that land that was once our economic engine, Fifth Avenue and the whole like, um, it is today, it, it represents something else, uh, to the table, not against the bloodshed that the people and the hard work that the folks, African-American folks who came here and provided their resources, labor, oftentimes for little or nothing. And to not be able to show anything on that screen that truly represented the greater good of its black citizens who helped build this city, this American Venice that we are not really getting the benefit that we should be getting uh, back from them. If they could spend 10 million there, we've got a Elks that's been in our community for 96 years. We paid taxes for 76 years as a not-for-profit organization. So between Jim Crow and between segregated mindsets, uh, it has just not come to the table for us. And I'm saying it's time to have some real conversations. And so when that screen goes up, it is something about black people ought to be on that screen.
Okay. Mr. Bose, I wanted to bring you into the conversation about the, the, the story. And we don't have time to discuss it in, in exhaustive detail, but the redevelopment of the LA Lee branch of the YMCA, right, is what Dr. Hankerson is talking about. I know it was a highly contentious issue in the community. How, how was it handled? What is your position about the way this was undertaken?
Um, unfortunately it has divided the community. So you have people that have been for it, staunchly for it. And some people who haven't, um, been for it for that very reason, Dr. Hankerson mentioned, um, it is, it was considered hollowed ground. Um, and the historical impact and, um, that it has meant to, um, many of our pioneers who helped found this community. I don't like to see our community divided. I'm, I'm always for amplifying and connecting voices. So that has been disheartening. I think the most difficult challenge, um, the city has had is translating the mission. If the goal was to develop and, and District Three is more than Sis Trunk Boulevard, please understand that. Uh, often when people refer to District Three, they say Sis Trunk, Sis Trunk, Sis Trunk. There's so many, uh, rich communities within District Three, like Melrose, like, um, Dillard, like Lake Air, Golden Heights, Sweden. Uh, there's so many rich, rich communities and they all have their own specific history as well. Um, so I want to, um, reference that as well, make sure we highlight the entire district, um, Southwest that has been newly folded in from four and is now in District Three. Um, but what I was concerned about is, um, the shoving it, you know, we're going to do this, you're going to, whether you like it or not. Um, and, and that kind of divided the community and people who have been here for decades, decades or generations whose, whose parents, um, streets are named after in our community, um, still to this day, um, are very uncomfortable and, and disheartened when they ride by LA Lee. Um, LA Lee is within walking distance of my house, the, the old one. And, um, I echo the sentiments Dr. Hankerson said, you know, it wasn't a paved street. Um, it wasn't maintained. So as far as being a good neighbor, it wasn't, um, displayed that way. And now that they're on, um, Sis Trunk, it is a beautiful building. Um, I think they did a, a great job. So I think the intent was to bring redevelopment. I think the delivery probably fell short because they didn't, um, hear, in my opinion, enough of, of the community and it divided the community. Anything that divides us is not going to strengthen us. Um, and to this day, like I said, many of our older pioneers who, um, still live here always say, it's a shame what they did. It's a shame what they did. And some people who are newer to the community, um, love it. And so it is divisive. You'll find people who love it and, and people who don't. What I would like to see, um, this part of my campaign platform is a more diverse, um, economic, um, thrust for the district, the entire district. Um, I'd like to see more businesses. And if you look at, um, the history of, uh, Sis Trunk, for instance, there were small owned businesses, uh, on Sis Trunk, not large corporations. And so I think that's important when we're talking about the development of the Northwest, of the entire district, that we encourage small businesses to come here because they're going to hire locally. For instance, my son, who is now a college freshman, one of my kids, because we've raised five, um, he wanted a, a, a summer job. There's nowhere for him to. There's nowhere for him to to walk to work. We also have a food desert here. There's nowhere for seniors or families that have one car, can't get, can't walk to a grocery store. Um, and so those are some of the concerns of everyday people beyond L.A. Lee and and the YMCA that is on Sis Trunk. What else are we doing? Because that's just one project. Um, again, I'll I'll echo again, we have been left behind historically. And what the community wants is more businesses. The community want our resources, employment. The community want is to have a walkable uh Trump, a walkable thirty-first, a walkable sunrise. What the community want is to be affordable housing. The community wants is is safer neighborhoods. So it's important that we talk about the community. I know we have to fold in some of this politics or politics, but um unfortunately, that was divisive for the community. And I think it can be a teachable lesson as we move forward and look at new projects slated that we keep the community's thoughts and visions in mind as well.
Okay. Uh, we're coming up to the top of the hour, and at the top of the hour, we have another one of your district races uh to just to interview candidates in, and I wish we had more time. Yeah, I want to thank you both for participating today.
Thank you for inviting.
It's a very important seat. It is so important that that District Three have a very, very strong voice. You both have very, very strong voices, glad to see that. Good, good luck to you both, and thanks for participating. All right.
Thank you for your time.